Let us pray. Lo, we come today thanking you for your blessing on our city over the past year. We once again come today asking for your divine guidance as we make decisions that will have a positive impact on our city and its people. We ask your favor and blessing on this board of mayor and commissioners, the city manager, our staff and employees, and our citizens. We thank you for this Christmas season when we give thanks for the coming of your son and our Savior into the world. And we pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion on it? All favor?
Aye.
Motion received by the minutes of our recess meeting of November 8th, 2018, our recess meeting November 14th, 2018, and our regular meeting November 15th, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion on those minutes? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, son. Hearing the reports.
Just a quick thank you to everyone who attended Ashland Motion's brunch and grounds event. I think we sold out all 300 tickets. The weather was nice. It wasn't freezing cold, it's kind of rainy, but we still had a lot. It was a great way to showcase our outcome.
Mayor, a couple of things, Mayor. First off, the gifts and contribution letter will be going out this week. Just a reminder that you all made some of the changes we made, recommended to you all, you accepted in the form of an ordinance a couple of months ago, and for everybody else's review. If anybody received a gift and contribution from the city in 2018, they're required to submit a completion report to verify how far your funds were expended. And then, the biggest change on this is any organization wishing to conduct a fundraising event that required city services and they're requesting to waive the cost on those city services, they need to submit a gifts and contributions application form this year. We think we have everybody identified. The who have done that in the past, they'll all receive letters, but these are due on the 15th of January, 2019. Also, our original agenda today had us getting the annual audit report from Kelly Galloway, Smith &amp; Dulesby. Unfortunately, at the last minute, they had some conflicts, and they're going to come and present that to us in January. And then finally, there was an announcement out on Facebook, but the flood wall on 13th Street is going to go up on Monday, 17th December, from 7:00 a.m. to approximately 3:00 p.m. in the afternoon. This is a requirement by the Corps of Engineers to exercise this every three years to make sure that if the flood event does come, that the parks work effectively together. We picked that date intentionally for less impact on the local business there, and then also the recycling point is not open at that time. That's all I have.
Okay, right. At this point in our meetings, public participation, if you'd like to approach the podium, let us give you your name and address, and present five minutes or less, any issue you may have in the city, or concern, or whatever. Okay. Appreciate you all being here today. Thank you. Old business, I'm A.
In ordinance, the city of Asheville, Kentucky authorized and directed the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Asheville, Kentucky, Asheville City Police Members, General Order Police, Asheville Lodge Number Three.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, son. Out of B.
In ordinance, the city of Asheville, Kentucky repealing ordinance number 71, series of 2016, in establishing and prolongating certain procedural regulations and prerequisites qualifications relating to the recruitment and selection of police officers for the Department of Police of the city of Asheville, providing for a one-year probationary period of service upon original employment as a police officer, acquiring certain prescribed related education and training, and further providing for performance evaluation standards of discipline for all such employees, this ordinance to be known and referred to as a comprehensive hiring ordinance for police officers for the Department of Police.
Got motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, son. Out of C.
In ordinance, the city of Asheville, Kentucky amending the salary chart, amending Part II Employment Process, Section A and Part V Compensation Plan, Section K, the policies and procedures, Compensation Plan and Classification Plan, as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, son. Out of D.
In ordinance, the city of Asheville, Kentucky establishing the procedural regulations and prerequisite qualifications for hiring within the fire department, and repealing ordinance number 73, series of 2013.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, son. Any other old business? Consent agenda.
A resolution of the city of Asheville, Kentucky adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners on December 13th, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, son. New business, I'm A.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "In ordinance, the city of Asheville, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute Task Order 2018-2 between the city of Asheville, Kentucky and HDR Engineering, regarding the Phase II Stormwater MS4 Compliance Report in the Amount of $15,080."
Got motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, son. Out of B.
In ordinance, the city of Asheville, Kentucky authorizing and approving Change Order Number Three between the city of Asheville, Kentucky and Engineering Associates, PSC, regarding their proposals for drafting and design work completed in three phases for the new water distribution and sewer maintenance facilities located at Mill Street and 28th Street. By increasing Phase Three in the amount of $8,277.50 will permit work for the Department of Engineering and Utilities, Division of Water Distribution and Waste Water Collection.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, son. Out of C.
In ordinance, the city of Asheville, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the city of Asheville and Runkie of Kentucky, Inc., for the removal and disposition of sludge in the city of Asheville wastewater treatment plant and water treatment plant for a period of one year through the Department of Public Services and Utility Operations.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Reeswood, you know, people here just read this all the time about the sludge removal. Could you briefly just explain, is that on a monthly basis, they pick up sludge, or weekly?
No, they pick up a couple times a day.
Couple times a day.
Sometimes even more. Yeah, typically, we process sludge as quick as our equipment can manage it without meaning overtime hours on the weekends, so they don't pick up all through the weekend.
And that sludge accumulates where?
Well, at the sewer treatment plant, whenever we, we take out the prop of the water from the sewage, and we treat it and send it to the river after it's been treated to standards, but the sludge is the leftover solid, so we get it as dry as physically possible so that we're not paying more of a landfill bill than we need to, and then they pick it up about twice a day.
And then, when we clean the reservoir, how often do we have to do that, where we drain the reservoir, get all the sludge, basically sediment?
At the water plant, on average, it's been five to six years to clean them, five on average.
Okay. So we have trucks going twice a day to the landfill from our sewer treatment plant, sludge removal?
Yes, the hauler actually comes and picks them up. They're on a large roll-off dumpster that we fill all throughout the day.
Okay, thanks. All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, son. Out of D.
In ordinance, the city of Asheville, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the city of Asheville, Kentucky and New Tech Systems, Inc., for the installation and implementation of security cameras in a monitoring system for the city of Asheville's Mill Street facility in the amount of $36,558 for the Department of Public Services and Utility Operations.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, son. Out of E.
In ordinance, the city of Asheville, Kentucky approving mediation agreement and authorizing and directing Stephen Gilmore, Mayor, to execute a quick lane D to conveyance between the city of Asheville and George Seaborse III and Janetta Seaborse regarding Pembroke Place.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, son. Out of M.
In ordinance, the city of Asheville, Kentucky establishing the fee for the purchase of a recycling permit for use of the Asheville Recycling Center by non-residents of the city of Asheville, Kentucky.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do you want to give a little background?
Okay, it's a good time to do it. So, a couple commission meetings ago, after it had been determined that the recycling point in the city would only be eligible for cities that pay, city residents could access it by showing their driver's license or a utility bill that showed a garbage fee on it. The board had requested we look into the possibility of opening up the recycling point to non-city residents at a fee. So, the recommendation today is that it's an annual fee of $100, it's roughly $8 a month. If you're a city of Asheville resident, you already pay $22 a month for garbage fees, so it'll be basically $8 a month with a $1 handling fee. You can be able to go to the front desk downstairs on the first floor, pay your $100, you'll get a numbered placard like this, that a non-citizen can keep in their car, however they want to do it. When the non-citizen comes in, we're going to track the number that's on here, they're individually numbered, to make sure that nobody's abusing the system. We do have capacity at this point. If we determine next year that we're still under capacity for what we're already paying for, we can adjust the cost of that as necessary. So, right now, I think this is a great interim. We're still dealing with larger strategic issues on recycling across the country, costs, and is there a market for that? We'll continue to keep our eye on it. Was able to attend a webinar the other day from the ICMA, the International City and County Managers Association, which was very enlightening. Jack, Brian, our Streets Department, Garage and Sanitation were all there, I think they found that educational. And as these things settle in, we will continue to try to find the most cost-effective way for the city to provide recycling services to our citizens, and simultaneously reduce the cost, and we're looking at all those avenues. So essentially, $100 gets you this, if you come in February, it'll be prorated for the rest of the year, and then we'll make a recommendation for adjustment next year as necessary.
Some people that may have part-time come in, may send a check in, maybe sell a wristband bomb load, we can send that to them. We have a whole lot of people that probably not even come in.
I'm sure we'd be mailing these uptown, if we did.
Well, that's the way it is. Let me make one more comment about where you were going with recycling. Originally, years ago, when towns got into recycling in Asheville too, you wanted to do two things. One is to keep the environment clean, be green as much as we possibly can, I think everybody feels strongly about that. I know people in our community do, and I know this commission is committed to that. Unless you ever think that it's a, you even break even with this, it doesn't happen, and I haven't have yet. It's costly to offer a recycling program, and not just because some of the givens, I think a year or two ago, Commissioner Goode brought up one evening in our budget sessions talking, that if you happen to discard a, and this is anybody, I mean, I love Giovanni pizza, okay, so it's nothing against them, but I can remember him making a comment, if you throw a Giovanni's pizza box in your trash, or you recycle, it's going to a garbage dump, you know, they're not going to even try to recycle that. And him saying that made me think that there are probably lesser and greater things that we sometimes mix with that. And I understand that part, but being, that being said, even if your recycling is 100% pure recycled material, we're not always sure where it's going. And this isn't any direct comment towards Runkie, I'm saying.
And if Runkie's here.
Yeah, oh, are they? Okay. But I've been reading nationwide reports, and there are a lot of communities where either it becomes a negative cost for the hauler that's coming to get them, and sometimes they may end up taking it to a dump. And I'm not great to handle Runkie, trust me.
Well, if I can.
Absolutely. I'm just rambling about, but my major point is to my public to understand that we're doing this at a cost to our taxpayers, to provide a greener Asheville, and a future for all of our children, grandchildren, et cetera. It's kind of an effort we're taking. I mean, just many of our homes, it's an effort to have two receptacles going all the time. And I know in my home, and basically, at this point, just my wife and I, but we really have more than one bag in our trash can for the city sanitation workers to pick up, because there's so much recycling there, you know, and we purchase it every day. And my initial, or my original presentation, I remember hearing years ago, was that if you had so much recycled material, the more you had, the better chance you had of breaking even. And is that, is that still a reasonable statement to make?
Well, the markets are, the markets are in terrible, terrible shape.
Fluctuate like everything else?
Yeah, it's.
You, you can come up sort of like the hearing in the room.
While he's coming up, one broad thing, and if you're interested in this, you search municipal recycling, and the huge impact, and sir, you can correct me on this if I'm off-base, one of the largest purchasers of recycled material in the world has been China for the past decades, and they have tightened their environmental concerns in China. One of the things we learned the other day was that currently, they're taking 3% contamination on recycles, and they're going to drop that to .5% this year, which tightens the market at that point. So there's a term that I learned the other day called aspirational recycling. Because you've recycled glass in the past, you think it should be recycled. Well, it's not cost-effective to do that today, it might be tomorrow if some other circumstance changes, but the market for that drives what Runkie prices to us, and then what specifically we can negotiate with recycling. And so, even though you may think it's a good thing to recycle glass, and it is environmentally speaking, but there's a certain market for certain things. As we learn more about this, we'll become to Runkie and say, hey, if we can guarantee you some type of, you know, very pure stream, would that change, you know, where we're at on recycling? Those are the discussions that we need to have as a city, with organizations like Runkie and Republican, anybody else who's offering that service. But the impact of China has had a massive effect throughout the country. You'll see articles in about California on the West Coast, they've got these massive warehouses that store recycling, they're taking warehouses of recycling and taking it straight to the dump, because there's just no market for it. And I think the industry is trying to find other customers, Taiwan, or Vietnam, some of the other Asian countries throughout the world, but I think that's where I'm where at.
Well, one thing, I can assure you this, and anybody, feel free to go to our website, or if you want a tour of one of our facilities, but the material that you take to where the bridge is, where it's recycling there, it goes to our Arington facility, and then we either take it to Columbus, Ohio, or it goes to Cincinnati, Ohio for processing, and then we sort it there. All of that material, the Runkies are huge backers when it comes to the recycling thing. If we say we are recycling.
So Runkie supports recycling?
Yes, if we say we're recycling, we're, it's getting recycled.
Yeah, it's not such a bad business model that you've gotten out of that business?
Well, there's charges for it, I mean, because the markets are so, the markets are not in great shape at all.
But yours, have you withdrawn that service from any city that you provided to, maybe like curbside?
Not that I'm aware of, not my territory.
Okay, so it's still viable for you, yet the cost is paid for by the citizens?
If it's in a contract, say we contracted with a municipality, and we're offering trash service and curbside recycling services that's there, we're not backing out.
How many cities do you currently serve?
Oh, got me kind of on the spot there.
How many states?
We're in four states.
So you would say probably hundreds of cities?
Oh, yes.
And some of those cities you do offer curbside recycling?
Yes.
And you have not withdrawn that service?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, the curbside recycling is, I've worked with Marty, about Mr. Goode and Mrs. Clark, and we put together some stuff for you all, I think it was a year or two ago, for some curbside recycling, which, curbside recycling is expensive, I mean, to be able to add on there, but.
But you as a business have not stopped recycling?
No, we're continuing to go right on through. And please, I think most of you have my email address or my phone number, if you guys would like to go tour one of the facilities, I think Cincinnati might be closer for you than Columbus, not really sure, but.
I have no doubt that you would honor our contract to take it to be recycled. I have no doubt, and I have full faith in you and your company, that we all do. We all think you're doing the right thing, and we appreciate you coming here today.
Well, thank you, guys.
Sir, can you address one thing, how the contamination, because that's a challenge we have, like I said, on aspirational recycling, the pizza box that you brought up, can you explain that for the public on what happens, where is that found? You know, there's rumors about, oh, a whole load then is thrown away, and I don't believe that to be accurate. Can you explain that for the public, please?
Well, I can say for Runkie terms on this, I can't speak for everybody else with it. But anytime you're running a public drop-off location, you are going to have contamination. I mean, it's going to happen. A lot of people think that they're recycling the correct thing, but they're, it's not follow, it does not fall into the acceptable items. And you guys have done a good job of placing right there at the front of the gate, the entrance, where it says the acceptable items, there's things that are not acceptable on that, so that, I mean, that's part of the piece, that's the huge piece of it, is the educational piece of it to the public. But still, you get people that want to, they think that they can.
The garbage bags, they bring their recycling?
Right. The garbage bags are a nightmare. Garbage bags are a nightmare. Yes, if they, if every one of the garbage bags were completely clean, and all that, yeah, that can be recycled.
In curbside, you would have garbage bags.
You would have garbage bags.
Well, let me ask you right there, because I know that's probably been a real tick for a lot of my residents.
And haul their own garbage to the place.
So what you're telling me is, the reason they have to dump the recycling out of the plastic bag now is to make sure it's not contaminated?
It guns up the system, too.
The plastic bags, when it gets to either Columbus or Cincinnati, one of the Runkie facilities for the single-stream, the, when it comes across the line, you get a bag, I mean, we bust the bags, I mean, we don't want them, but you're busting a bag, and what a bag does is it goes across what they call the knives, and it's, without showing you, it's really hard to kind of explain, but what happens are the bags, they start to stick together, and they start winding up, and you get more bags, more bags, more bags, well then you've got to stop the machine. Not only that, but the markets, like cardboard, you've got to keep it as clean as you can. And so, the, that's, that's one of the huge reasons why, that is the reason why we don't want plastic bags.
I got you. Well, I, you know, I have questions, and I can't answer them, because we've been thrown, we've been using a lot.
Which is, which is back, which is back to the point, is if we're willing to have people pay to use our remote recycling, we have a bunch of systems going to pay for curbside, or they wouldn't have a garbage bag at all, it would go in a dumpster, and they would be.
The only problem with, with the curbside that we have learned, is there are not enough people who are willing to pay for curbside for us to be able to afford Runkie, no get it.
My last meeting with Nick was in the thousands, that we would have to be signed up to make it feasible for curbside, correct?
Well, you actually, it was, Nick, do you have a list of the cities and the population sizes that you serve?
Oh, yeah, I can get you, I can email you something.
Thank you so much.
But we actually went back, this has been several, this has been several years ago, and I can't remember the gentleman's name that we worked with, but we, the city of Asheville actually did a survey piece where they sent it out, and the number was very, very.
I'd be intrigued, have you, I may need to sit down with you, let's go over Paducah, Kentucky's curbside recycling program, they have about, they have a population size of about 2,000 more than we do, and they have about 800 participants, and they offer almost at little to no cost, and I'd be interested.
What's the cost in the city? What's the cost of the city?
Well, that's what I'd be interested to know, what's your cost?
Right, well, we'd be more than happy to, and I'll shoot you an email.
That'd be great.
And say, hey, when do you want me?
Through our discussion before, every city's a little bit different.
Right, you compare apples to oranges, and I mean, every city, every city's different, way your streets are, the mentality of the people that want to recycle people here. I mean, it's, it's, but it can, it can work, it's just you've got to find the right, the right combination. Like with Marty and the man, we've looked at several, I mean.
But to be honest, sir, you are working for a private company?
Yes, sir.
And you are in the business of making a profit?
We, you have to, we can keep wheels on the business.
So we may have advantages if we did it in-house, but I appreciate your time.
Right, no, thank you.
Thanks, Lo.
One last thing, is, since we're talking about this, is just encouraging citizens to please try to follow that list that's posted out there. Unfortunately, even though we do man it, and I appreciate the shout-out for how pure our load is comparatively, we still have some folks coming down putting bags of garbage in, and the attendance looking the other way. It's just really frustrating, everybody trying to do the right thing with the recycling, and then suddenly tensing, we're not even talking, a misunderstanding on glass, we're talking. Pure trash. So, it's a little frustrating, and we're trying to do our best down there, appreciate the discussion.
Nick, what do you think about, what do you think about our system down there right now?
I mean, we have, from time to time, it was, I think it was last week, we contacted, we contacted the city that there was a container that was contaminated, but for, I mean, that's been, that's been a long time since we've had anything like that.
Pure garbage waste.
Yeah.
So even though there's talk of contamination, we're actually doing pretty good?
I, I mean, in my opinion, yeah, but I mean, if not, the drivers and the route managers would be saying, hey, you need to get a hold of Mr. Felty.
Well, I'm glad we're paying people to filter it, so that's good.
Well, I think you guys are doing a good job down there, the employ you have right now, and I think it's, we're getting a clean, more mature recycle. Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, son. I'm G.
In ordinance, the city of Asheville, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a grant agreement between the city of Asheville, Kentucky and WB Hospitality LLC, setting forth respective duties, rights, covenants, and obligations with respect to the acquisition of construction and financing of the hotel redevelopment project, and repealing ordinance number one, series of 2018.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just would like an explanation for the public as to what we're doing in this agreement that modifies the agreement?
Yeah, I'll, I think I can handle that.
Okay.
Counsel certainly can.
Sure. I can address any one.
Go right ahead.
We were contacted by the attorney for the hotel developers with respect to the agreement, and they informed me that their financing institutions had some concern about one of the provisions that was in this agreement, and that was with respect to their ability to refinance the project if needed, and their ability to sell, which was prohibited for a long period of time. Originally, I told them this was drafted by our bond counsel, and I was not going to make any opinion until I spoke to bond counsel, to see if this affected the validity of our bonding system. And I spoke to that counsel, advised that those were pretty much boilerplate provisions. So what we proposed to do is to remove the restriction that would allow them to refinance their financing at any time if they need to, and with respect to the sale, it would prohibit the sale for a period of three years without the consent of the city. The rationale being, we've committed funds to this project, in part, in reliance on these developers, we have faith in these developers, what they're going to do. And in three years, this project's going to be up and running, and hopefully be a huge success, and although they told me they have no particular plans to sell, but if they then wanted to sell the project, somebody else is going to be operating, so be it. But we've got the commitment that these folks are going to be doing it during that critical period. So those are relatively minor amendments, but again, it was, were concerns that their investors and their finance institutions had.
Thank you, Counsel.
And what was the bond counsel that you put in the equation?
With Dinsmore in Covington, I forgot his name.
And because we ourselves as taxpayers are, are, are in this, that's why they're asking for this, they have to ask for permission.
Anything else? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, son. Any other new business?
I have some new business.
Okay.
Mr. Perkins and I met this morning with city staff on the Capital Projects Committee, which was very informative and productive, and it was a good meeting. But we need to set that as a regular meeting, so that we don't have, so the public is aware of it. is aware when that meeting happens and just the reporting aspect of it, we need to make a regular meeting. So I would like to make the motion that that committee meet, um, if there is pending business on the third Thursday of the month, the, the Thursday that's not a commission meeting at noon. That seems to work toward our schedules best.
And you all will determine if there's pending business, and whether the...
And if, and if there's any material change in the date of the meeting, we will let the public know.
It, it would be a regular meeting that wouldn't require a notice. If the frame rates, if it was to be canceled, you're just supposed to notice the cancellation, but it would be a regular recurring meeting, which would be, not require a special meeting or a special meeting notice.
Time like second.
Second. So what cost do you think that advertises?
Right.
Right, not required to advertise for a regular meeting.
Right.
We've posted on Facebook, which takes care of that.
And I want to thank, uh, citizen, Derek Stevens, for being a participant in that meeting today, uh, it helps, obviously, anytime we have the public involved.
Excellent. All favor?
Aye.
Both like side? Anything else?
I do have another thing, Mayor, I've got, uh, some information on a shopping cart prevention ordinance, uh, that I'd like to pass out to our board here for review today, and then hopefully with, uh, councils, uh, looking over the, uh, sample ordinance I'm providing, uh, we can look at strengthening how we deal with, uh, shopping cart plight. Uh, I've picked up many, I know that city managers reported it, I know other staff members get calls, I know our streets department gets burdened by them, and I think our retailers are losing thousands and thousands of dollars from people inadvertently stealing their shopping carts, and what we need to do is, I think, strengthen our ordinance to possibly hold people accountable, not just in cardholders, um, but maybe the, uh, stores that obviously have the, uh, cards in their possession initially. And one of the things is, it's based off, uh, a council approved an ordinance in Yuba City, California, and in this document I've provided you on, it's a ordinance, it's an article from their local paper about the ordinance, a sample of the code enforcement, uh, material, uh, that code uses to, uh, check with these different retailers to make sure they're in compliance with how they shop, that you are managing their shopping cart prevention plan. And if you look here, there is a shopping cart prevention plan, uh, on your third page, I think.
Keep your wisdom.
And you got it, that's your one. Yeah, and so if you look at Yuba City's, uh, 2018 abandoned shopping cart prevention plan, and I'll provide this to the public to review as well, but...
Is there anybody closer than us than Yuba City?
Well, I looked at a bunch of them, but Yuba was the one that had, that had all of their stuff online, that they're, they were with it on the...
They're on it.
Yeah.
They're on it.
And actually, the last page is a editorial by their local newspaper, encouraged by the decreased, if not perceived decrease, in the amount of shopping carts in their community that are out there. And one of the, the, if you look at the shopping cart prevention plan, it, it asks that anybody that has a shopping cart, register with our city code enforcement division. And if you have zero to nine cards, all you have to do is basically submit your information to code enforcement. If you have 10 or more cards, you need to tell us how many you have, and then, then you've got to go to a, the next step, which is a notice to customers, and it's how you inform customers that removing or being in possession of a shopping cart off the store premises is a violation of state law. And then posting signs as a requirement, also posting it on their shopping carts themselves, that they cannot and should not take this stuff off. Loss prevention measures, please describe to the city what you're doing to keep your shopping carts on your property, whether that be wheel locks, electronic or disabling devices, carts equipped with poles, clerks and security personnel, and then six, having a mandatory retrieval plan with a city notification in place, that you get your shopping carts, and also providing the city with the name and contact information of who you go to get the shopping carts. After hour card containment, describe a plan there if something happens after hours. And how you train your employees to keep the shopping carts on your property, because we don't want them on our city streets, we don't want them on our city sidewalks, it's a sign of plight, I know code enforcement has a lot on their plate, but I think there's probably maybe six or seven businesses total that would have shopping carts that exceed 10, maybe, but if we get another dollar or maybe more.
It depends where they're building.
But I think there's a couple of big offenders, that's really what this is to try to remedy, and I know that the police department gets called about that stuff too.
It's actually theft, isn't it?
It is theft.
We, we run into the problem with what you say is, even though it's a loss to the, to the retailer, uh, they're not interested in prosecuting, so we're in a, we're in a quandary of what we can do.
Maybe we can make this, uh, the incentive to them to get it back to their property, otherwise we will, we'll take corrective action with them. We've got a lot of people that play other roles, and some citizens, um, think that they can just take a cart off property to wherever they're going, and unfortunately, that's, that's really not the case, you're walking off of somebody's stuff.
Commissioner, do you envision a, a penalty for people that are violating that?
I think we have a penalty in the ordinance, but I don't think it's very big at all, and I think we need to update the penalty to match, uh, what maybe other cities are doing. Obviously, uh, it needs to, we need to look at the costs of our streets department every time they have to pick a cart up, I mean, we have to cover our costs for doing the work that maybe some of these retailers should be doing.
Is there, do you also envision a penalty for that businesses associated with this?
That would be the penalty, there, that's where the penalty would lie, if they do not, if you call them in 24 hours and they don't pick up, then there's a penalty for us holding on to it.
Well, before we ever do this ordinance, I think we need to get something out, uh, Mr. Pollard, do, do you come up with a list of the business of national acts to use carts, 10 or more, and, and let's, uh, let's share our concerns as a city with them, and what they have in place now, and, uh, you know, the, the only carts, I've, I've seen a couple of them over a hill somewhere, or if you run...
I personally took 300 from Deboard Hill back to Walmart.
300?
300.
And this is something that, um...
Custom...
Do you have...
They just pulled them off.
Jack, uh, streets department is...
Yeah, I have two, I have two volunteers helping me.
We do...
Over how long a period of time?
Uh, who knows how long they were accumulating, they were so, they...
Oh, you, you, you had that many in one lick that you had to go back and forth with?
Yeah, they had, the mow, the people that mowed the grass around Deboard just left the grass tall where the shopping carts were.
We do have some statistical information available, Jackson, uh, excuse me, Mr. Hunter's been tracking, uh, what they've been doing by month, so we've already got that, you know, I, I appreciate it, Commissioner, because it pushes the agenda on this, but we do have some statistical information out, we do know this is not just a, it's a problem, it's not a...
Well, I, I think, I think when we looked at this once before, um, our current ordinance, there is a fine that it's for the...
Citizens?
No, it's for the business owner. It's for the...
The retailer.
The retail.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, is there some, some means of this that if, and you're, that you're probably the one to ask, if, if the business isn't going to prosecute, or prosecute for that theft, can we cite for that theft? Is there a penalty for that?
Other cities do, other cities do cite, it's not, it's not a...
I, that would, that, that's going to come in, uh, that's going to come into play with the discussion with the county or Commonwealth attorney here in Kentucky, because if you don't have a cooperating victim or, or a witness, uh...
Well, I feel like the city's the victim, though, if they're leaving it all over.
No, well, I, I, as far as the theft, I, I thought you were meaning the theft.
Yeah, I'm just saying, is there, is there some means that the city can cite that person who has taken that cart if the business owner isn't willing to prosecute for $125 shopping cart?
It's a question, proof is the title, or who, I mean, who took the right shopping cart, where and when?
That's where...
If they're shoving it down the street?
Yeah, but I typically, sir, you're not, you're not getting to them until after they've been abandoned, yeah.
Well, and...
I see what you're saying.
But, but we have proof like this, which we don't have cooperation of the retailer, how do you prove that?
And requiring each cart to have the specific state law that, you know, says you can't take this off of property, that also gives you as an officer, obviously, teeth, saying, listen, this cart says you can't remove it, correct? I mean, that's what, the, the ordinance that I'm presenting to you today was worked with the California, uh, Grocers Association, so that was worked with Kroger and, and those other groups, so I think it's been vetted pretty hard.
I, I, I think what we need to do is make sure we're not in conflict with...
State law?
Yeah, and I, and I, and anything that we, we, we have for review, we definitely need to run it by the county attorney or the Commonwealth attorney, because some of these carts are very expensive, they may, they can reach the felony level.
I'm more, I think, interested maybe in compliance by the retailer, because I think the retailer will probably do the right thing before we'd be able to catch a citizen in the act.
Yeah, I agree, we need to make them fully aware of this, though, and, and they may have some comments, some of them might be, uh, we...
They probably appreciate it to get their $100 carts back.
Well, I think that...
I think, uh, one day, I think I returned three grand of the carts back to Walmart.
Well, be that simple, I'm interested...
I was looking for lunch, maybe nobody came over.
Well, this needs, this needs, uh, looking into and getting some of these businesses, and if they act like it's not their problem, or they, they don't care if they lose...
Then it becomes a problem of our, of the city.
Yeah, and then they...
And it is a problem of the city, in my opinion.
Yeah, they don't care if they lose, and some people are living on those carts.
Yeah, because it's litter, essentially.
Okay.
We're averaging, I just asked, Jack, we're, we're averaging about 25 to 30 a week. Glenn, we pick those up, so it's not a...
Wow.
We get them, if you've got some spare time, if they're, they're between jobs, it's about 25 to 30 a week.
I think Mr. Perkins' point is you're more likely, more likely to be successful attacking that on, on the retailer end than on the folks who are taking.
I just found it, I just found it, we're sitting on a corner. You're not going to get a five, maybe, if anybody puts a cart down the street.
Right.
If they need a cart, they're not going to be able to pay five.
Well, it's, it's, it's a little more difficult than, than you'd hope it would be, and, and I'm with the chief, we'd have to have the county authorities to be there to...
Those are the ones that are probably taking our citations and prosecuting in court, so, uh, it's a legal liability issue there beyond just a card issue, so...
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you, you're back.
Okay.
300, man?
Just to clarify, what's your next step?
Um, well, did I make a motion directing the city manager to investigate with staff and present an ordinance, uh, of the board to be considered at, maybe at the second meeting in January?
Have, have our law enforcement involved in that, to make sure, yeah. Make you a heads up in Catlin'sburg for me.
Yeah, there's a big change generally happening up there, so maybe it'll help, maybe it'll help.
Anything, anything else, do you have anything else? Please, as it sounds, all favor?
I have a second.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion in order to go executive session on, on two issues, pending litigation and individual personnel matter, uh, only these two items will be discussed in executive session, and no, no action will be taken.
You, you might take action on one of them.
Not in there.
No, not there.
Not there, that's all I mean.
All right, when we come back, we may...
When we come back, we make that action, all right, so we'll be in executive session.
Okay, we'll let the director reflect, we'll return to executive session at 1:10 PM. Only pending litigation and individual personnel matter was discussed, no actions taken. One final, uh, thing I would like to ask your concurrence with, if one of you would make a motion, I would like to, uh, declare, uh, Christmas Eve day, a day off for employees that are able to be off, to outphrase that, uh, obviously some...
You're so much incredible.
Some critical, uh, employees obviously have to remain on, which will get a different pay that day. I think our employees deserve it, it's not new ground, uh, we've done it before, and I think we have an opportunity, it's on Monday, they get some four-day weekend, Christmas time, and so forth, so...
So...
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion adjourned?
Um, we're going to recess till tomorrow morning.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, I forgot.
Hospital, for, it's about five minutes, just for three, three vitamins.
Nine o'clock in the morning, okay.
Okay.
Uh, we're in recess till tomorrow morning, the 13th, at 9:00 AM. Thank you, Counsel.